Allow the meeting to continue.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have, is Councilman Heath not present and is Councilman Whitmore not present? Are they both not present?
Councilman Whitmore is present.
But Councilman Heath is not present?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, the meeting will proceed. We will now have the invocation by none other than Bishop Erin Delackey, who's a bishop of Temple of Prayer Family Worships Cathedral, Bishop Lackey.
Thank you so much. All right, let us pray. Hail God, our Father, we do thank you for your grace. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for another opportunity to come together to discuss the business of the city of Fairburn. Father, I ask you to be with our mayor tonight, be with our council tonight, and be with everyone that will be a part of this meeting and allow everything to flow in the spirit of unity and allow the people's agenda to be the only agenda that will be present. Father, we thank you for bringing this city through one of the most tumultuous years that any of us can remember. And we thank you for how you have allowed the city of Fairburn to yet be standing strong because of the leadership that is on this Zoom meeting. And Father, continue to lead and guide our mayor and council as we are in this pandemic and allow their decisions that will affect our daily lives to be the right decisions. And we're calling it done in the matchless name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus. Amen.
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 The next item on the agenda tonight is the adoption of the city council minutes. We have two sets of minutes to be adopted tonight. The first is November ninth, 2020, city council meeting. All of our meetings since March of this year have been by Zoom, and this meeting was by Zoom also. Are there any corrections or additions to the November ninth, 2020 council meeting? There are none. Is there a motion to approve the November ninth, 2020 city council meeting minutes?
Councilman Heath, so moved.
Councilman Heath has made a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second, Councilman Whitmore.
Councilman Whitmore has provided the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries six zero. The next set of minutes is also November the ninth, executive session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor Protem Smallwood, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Councilwoman Davis.
The motion has been made by Mayor Protem Smallwood and seconded by Councilwoman Davis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are those any opposed? That motion also carries six to zero. Both sets of minutes are announced and approved. We are honored tonight, council members and other attendees on our meeting to hear from none other than Kimberly Dove, the Fulton County Board of Education, and also Dr. Anthony Newbold, who is the principal for the new Global Impact Academy, a STEM school which is here in the city of Fairburn. I had the pleasure last week of having a Zoom call with Principal Newbold, and he is going to share some very good things, some very interesting things, some very promising things that's coming to the city of Fairburn through the new Global Impact Academy. And so now I'm going to give the floor to Kimberly Dove and also Dr. Newbold. You can proceed.
All right, Ms. Dove, do you want to go first? Okay. I think I had a slide presentation, and I'm not sure if Dr. Parks was going to share that. All right, there we go.
There we go.
All right, well, as that loads, good evening, everyone. I am Anthony Newbold. I am the proud new principal of the Global Impact Academy, which will be located right there in Fairburn. For those of you who are not aware, it will be right behind the Georgia Military College campus. It is a brand-new construction. You can see the picture, the artist rendering down there at the bottom. And before I even get started, again, I'd like to thank Mayor Hearst for allowing me the opportunity to engage with you tonight. And also would love to thank Ms. Dove for her support through all of this. And it's really exciting to see all of these things come to fruition. All right, next slide. All right, so Global Impact Academy is a brand-new nine-through-twelve STEM magnet high school. Next year, we're going to open our doors to approximately 509th and 10th grade students, and our application for admittance actually ends tomorrow night at midnight. And, you know, just like anything else, it's very heavy up at the top. It wanes for a bit, but it has absolutely skyrocketed over the last week. At the start of this call, we were at 418 applicants with about 200 or so still in progress, and they just have to complete their application. So that is us, and we are a STEM school. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit more about that here in a second. You can go to the next slide. All right, so I like to just identify this last little piece of our mission. My team and I, we sat down and we figured out who we are and what we're going to stand on. And this last piece of our mission statement really embodies who we are as a school. Global Impact Academy scholars will be the productive, positive influencers of tomorrow, developing innovative solutions to the world's problems. And that's where that STEM piece comes in, and I'm going to talk about that in the next couple of slides next. So here's what we're offering at our school. So these are what we call our paths. So the first two are our academic pathways. So we'll have the advanced mathematics pathway and the advanced science pathway. But then we get into the career tech pieces, and this is where I'm tapping on a lot of you here tonight to continue to make these connections. So energy systems, which is a brand-new pathway in the state of Georgia. So we will actually be one of the first schools to offer energy systems as a pathway. Then we'll have engineering, and, you know, for those of you who may be engineers or have an engineering background, you know how robust the engineering field is. But then we have healthcare science, and that's going to break down into three different areas. So we're going to have patient care. We're going to have emergency medical responding or emergency medical technicians. And we're going to have biotechnology research and development. Then we're going to have information technology, and information technology will also break down into some subgroups. That'll be cybersecurity, game design, and computer science. Next. So we're going to just kind of skip over this one, but I like to use this slide to really talk about what that GIA way is going to be. And so we're looking to build some agency and autonomy in our learners, where they can kind of pick and choose what they're going to study and how they're going to achieve these things. But really, the root of it is going to be based in real-world applications. And I'm going to talk a lot about that in just a second. Next. So one of the things that's really going to make us different is that we are going to hold dear to the design-thinking approach, specifically the Stanford D-School model of design thinking. So basically, this is a process through which we solve problems. One of the things I always like to do, I hold up my phone. And so this phone is not the same phone that it was when the iPhone first came out. It's gone through several different iterations, and it's kind of that design-thinking process. But the one that I like to focus on the most is empathy. And see, that's the piece, I think, in education, we don't build that empathy muscle in our students enough, or not intentionally. And so at Global Impact, we're going to be very intentional about that as we proceed through this design process. Next, please. All right, so this is my favorite slide here, and this really kind of captures who we are as a school. So there are lots of STEM schools that are popping up all over the country. It's kind of the thing to do now. And so they do some really cool things. I visited a STEM school out in the Seattle area, and I went by one of their engineering classes, and the students had to make a small cement boat that floated. And I thought that that was a really cool idea, but then, as I start to think about it, I kind of asked myself, what's the purpose? So when you, I'm here at the bottom, I'm sorry. All right, I'll continue. I'm hoping you all can hear me over that background noise. So when you think about what our mission statement is, we talk about providing innovative solutions to the world's problems. When we sat down as a team and we talked about that, we all came to the realization that what we actually do is rooted in social studies, even though we're a STEM school. And so part of that is really trying to understand what's going on in the world. So in this particular slide, we've captured a lot. And so in that upper right-hand corner, you'll see this kind of shanty town, this dilapidated village, if you will. So let's say that in social studies, we're studying the island of Hispaniola, which on one side has the Dominican Republic, and on the other side has Haiti. And so we're studying that, and we're studying the history, we're studying slavery, we're studying economic structure, the government structure. And so our students are learning all of that information. But now our students will go into their English classes, and through their English classes, they will begin to conduct their own research and uncovering the types of problems that are prevalent in that area. So one of the problems may be infectious diseases. Then you have to vaccinate when you have infectious diseases, very relevant for what we're talking about today. We have to get the vaccine to people. We have to fix the dilapidated housing. Maybe there's a water supply issue. And so our students are starting to research those, and now they have choice and voice as to which problem they want to practice and study. So we are talking about social studies, we go into English for the research. In our science classes, we're talking about infectious diseases and vaccines and all of those things. We'll talk about the different types of viruses and things along those lines. Then in our math class, we may graph the amount of bacteria that's present in the water source and look at exponential growth and why it's unhealthy for people to consume that water. But now we're going to take that into our career tech classes. So we've got the math, the science, the social studies, the English, and now we're going to take that into biotech. And we're going to look at how people go about actually creating these vaccines. We're going to go into patient care, and what does it look like to care for a person who's exhibiting symptoms of cholera? Then we're going to take that into our engineering classes, and our engineering students, they will build a drone, because we talked about getting the vaccine to remote places. Another segment of engineering, they may actually construct the container that the vaccine would be held in in order to maintain its integrity. The engineering students may then take old discarded shipping containers, and they can repurpose those into housing or clinics, as you see down there in the bottom. Our energy systems students will use solar panels so that the people in the clinics and in the homes will have electricity. You know, we could also have smaller versions of that. Our IT students will program the drones that will be able to get to where they're going. And so now, what we have now, we have subjects that are all connected, and students see the relevance. So think back to your days in school, where you're like, why am I learning this? And so we're being very intentional about the learning experiences that we're designing right now so that the students will see the connections between all of their subject matter. And that's the GIA difference, and that's how our students will use STEM to address many of the problems that are evident in the world we live in. Next slide, please. And so here's what we're looking for. We have some partnership goals and aspirations. And so one of the first things, I think the most important thing that we're looking for when we're trying to establish partnerships, is for them to come in and mentor, for them to come in and provide guidance to our students. We want internships and things along those lines. Then we also want people to come in and speak in a speaker series. So we're going to have like our own TED Talk series where, once a month, we invite people to come in, and then students have choice as to who they go and listen to, people who are coming from various ends of STEM fields. Next, please. All right, and I can't see, there's a little line there up at the top. But looking at, again, that mentorship piece, where we have these people who can come in and provide that guidance on these projects that our students are working on. So imagine being a student, conducting research, you're working on prototypes and all of that stuff, but you have someone from IBM who comes in to work with you. You have an engineer from Duracell who comes in to work with you, a programmer who comes in to work with you on your projects. That's what we're looking for. And then last but not least, because we are in the Fairburn community, we want to be a part of the community. And so our goal is to have a number of events, STEM carnivals, college and career fairs, community fairs, job fairs, all of that stuff. And we want our partners to come in and work with us and be a part of the community. So again, I mentioned Duracell, because that's someone right there in Fairburn who I've had the opportunity to go and visit. And they do have jobs that some of our parents may be able to work in. And so that's the type of thing that we're looking for in these partnerships. We are in this community. We love this community, and we want to make sure that we enhance this community. Next slide. So this kind of sums up all of what we're talking about with our partnerships. One of the things I want to point out is that the first thing that we're asking for is not money. Oftentimes, when schools go in to work with a company, they have their hands stuck out, and they're asking for money. And Fulton County Schools does a really good job of providing us with the majority of the things that we need. So we're looking for things like resources. We're looking for internships and those externships, all of those things that we talked about. Now, if money is on the table, we will take it, and we will definitely make it work. We have a number of maker spaces in our building that we're really excited about, and we could purpose that money so that it goes right back into the students. But that's not the one, that's not the first thing we're looking for. Can you come in and help our parents with resume writing or interview skills? Those are the types of things that we want from many of our partnerships. Next. And so in return from our partners, you know, we have space, we have classroom space, we have a website. So we can do a number of things. We're going to have a nice prominent wall in our building where we will display all of our partners so that, you know, everyone who walks into our building knows we are partners with the city of Fairburn, we're partners with Google, we're partners with Zoo Atlanta, whomever it may be, all of these people who we've engaged with. We want everyone to know that you all are partners in education. Next. So you may need to share your sound on this one. This is just a short video that I would love for you all to see that kind of just captures our vision and what it's going to feel like on our campus. You can play that. All right, so the last slide is just, you know, one, if you all have questions, I'm not sure how this meeting is going. But if you all have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them. And I can drop my contact information. We would love for, if you can make any virtual introductions via email, you know, and then allow us to take it from there. We are more than happy to take that. So I appreciate you all and your time, and we really look forward to having you all out. Once we open up our building, it's going to be an amazing place for students to learn. And so with that said, I am all done, and if you have any questions of me, I will feel free to shoot them.
Before we get to the questions, I would like to go to Ms. Dove. Do you have any comments or?
I do. So it's hard to follow Dr. Newbold, right? I work in software engineering professionally, and I'm just excited about what our global impact can do. But one of the things I did want to share are some infrastructure things that the community has asked over and over again of our board. Our board is 100% committed to making sure that the success of global impact is there. Our entire board took a trip to visit several different STEM academies that were really beautiful, and some of them were not, but it was the learning that went on inside of those buildings, as Dr. Newbold said. So one of the things I wanted to just give you a quick update on were our board representation, COVID-19, some of our student learning opportunities, the Fairburn schools' remote and face-to-face numbers, our food stops, and Dr. Newbold already went over the global impact. If you could bring up the Fulton County School's website, and as we are bringing up that website, let's go to the board. Wanted to let you know that Linda Bryant has retired, and her last day officially is December 31st. Linda Bryant represents this area. I represent part of Langston Hughes, which is a feeder school for Campbell and Renaissance Middle. That's why I'm here as well. So on our board, also Francesco Warren will start as your new board number on January the 1st, 2021. We are so excited for her to come on board. But this is always where you can come and find out which district you're in and what schools we all represent. And then also, if you go to the homepage, let's talk a little bit about COVID-19. Our board returned to face-to-face meetings in June when our students and our, not our students, but our staff returned back to the building. We are now reporting on our COVID-19 numbers twice a week, and we use a closing matrix. Now, I want to be clear, our closing matrix does not represent what we first started when we didn't know much about closing and opening. And also, our students are going on winter break on this coming Monday, and with them going on winter break, and our families and teachers coming back. On January 2nd, Core will be providing our on-staff testing for our staff and families. Our epidemiology reports are produced every week, and our superintendent, along with his executive team, are working diligently with the Board of Health to make sure that we're following the guidelines to keep our families and our teachers safe. Our families have two options. It is optional to return to Fulton County Schools face-to-face, or they can select universal remote. We started full face-to-face, universal remote on October the 14th, and that was a phased-in approach. So that was the fifth stage there. With that, in Fairburn, just to give you some numbers, Campbell Elementary has a 46% remote and 53% are face-to-face. So we have plenty of space in our buildings in order to accommodate physical and social distancing. At Renaissance Middle, we have 54% remote and 46% face-to-face. And at Langston Hughes, we have 54% of our high schoolers are remote and 45% are face-to-face. Many of people have asked about devices. Fulton County Schools provides devices to all students, grades second through 12. We also provide hotspots to connect to the internet for those families who do not have access to the internet in their homes. For second semester, our parents were asked to fill out a survey that ended on last Friday, December the 11th, to determine how they will return to school in January. That gives us an opportunity to properly staff both in-school and remote learning for our families. Our break starts on the 21st, and our students return on January the 6th. We provide food stop meals every Wednesday for curbside pickup, and we've been doing this since the pandemic. At elementary schools, you can go pick up food Wednesdays, 8:30 to 9:30. And middle schools and high schools, food is available Wednesdays, 9:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. And this doesn't, it doesn't matter, if you're a child below the age of 18 and a special needs student up to 21, you're eligible to receive meals. You do not have to show an ID, you don't have to show your student ID, and a child does not have to be in the car with you. Finally, we will not be providing meal service during the winter break. However, we are providing extra meals on Thursday, December, when is Thursday, the 17th? And then the students will be receiving 10 meals for over the break. They'll be receiving five to 10 meals for breakfast and the 10 meals for lunch over their winter break. And finally, we are adding a K-8 model to our inventory. And in our K-8 model and our inventory, what that is, is that in areas of low student achievement, one of the studies and research have happened that will allow a K to eight to have a smoother transition. So if you imagine that if you're living in an apartment area or a high transient area, a student will be there from grades K through eight, and that transition. So you give the families an opportunity to have more of a family feel inside their educational environment. And I wanted to go really quickly. So I am available by email at dovekfultonschools.org, or I could be reached at 404-493-3839. Thank you, Mayor Hearst, and councilmen and women for inviting me and Dr. Newbold to share information on Fulton County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for your presentation. Council members, do you have any questions or comments for Dr. Newbold or Kimberly Dove? The floor is open.
Yes, Mayor, this is Councilwoman Davis. This is for Dr. Newbold. Pleasure meeting you, sir. Very exciting about the STEM school here in Fairburn. But I wanted to ask a question in reference to the grades. I don't know if I was misinformed or read incorrectly, but I was thinking it was going to be from sixth grade to 12th grade. And did I not hear you say it was going to be from ninth grade to 12th grade?
I could jump in while we unmute Dr. Newbold. You're right, Councilwoman. We did first anticipate that we were going to do a six-through-12, but then Dr. New- But then Dr. Newbold will finish that. Now to his mic, it's unmuted.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So yes, initially, again, it was to be six through 12. As we started looking at the programming and what we would be able to offer, we figured that we would be able to offer more to a full high school than we would if we were to split those resources with middle school and high school. And so the superintendent made a recommendation to the board that the school be, I guess, changed to just high school, nine through 12. And the board accepted that recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Newbold or Kimberly Dove from council?
I would like to add, the other thing that's happened and changed in Fulton County Schools is that we've added a CTAE program in our middle schools, which will align to our high schools. So that was another reason for doing that. So our sixth graders this year has the opportunity to explore many careers before they even get to high school and have a career technical education as early as certified, as early as eighth grade, going up to high school. So that was another reason why we made that decision, and that was a great recommendation for us.
Thank you, Ms. Dove. Any other questions or comments from council?
Mayor, I have a follow-up, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now with the change in the different grade levels, will that give you more space to do other things? Or what would you do with that additional space? That is, if the school was built with the idea of sixth grade through 12th grade?
Right, so the overall attendance of the school, so once we reach capacity, will be at 900 students. It would have been 900 students whether those were 900 sixth through 12th grade or nine through 12th grade students. So the capacity is still at 900. But what we're able to do now, though, is add additional career tech pathways. And so one of the things that is just, it's right in our faces as we drive around the city of Fairburn and all over South Fulton, is a logistics pathway. And that's something that you don't really see much of. But we have the airport, we have the railways, we have the highways. We have, we have a little bit of everything. And so it only makes sense that, you know, eventually we will add a logistics pathway. And so that's something that we'll be able to do because we won't have to split those resources with a middle school program.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mayor, Councilwoman Portis Jones?
Yeah, Councilwoman Portis Jones.
Yes, good to see you, Board Member Dove. And we'll be chatting soon. My question is for Mr. Newbold, and maybe Board Member Dove can answer as well. I've heard many concerns about the qualifications for the school. Could you talk a little bit about the application and what are the criteria for acceptance into the school?
Ms. Dove, you want to take that, or you want me to take that?
You could take it, and then I'll follow up with, the process is, we wanted it to be simple, right? So there is a misnomer about that, but I would like Dr. Newbold to give you the specifics over that. We wanted this to be available to all students regardless of their academic, well, there is a level, but they don't have to be A students.
Right.
Let me say that.
Right, so I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure the, you didn't use the word complaints, but I'm not, I'm not, I can't remember the word that you used. But we have a process. The process is there's an application. It's a very simple application. But as far as criteria for getting in, you have to, you know, be a high school student, ninth grade, 10th grade for next year. And then we'll admit a grade of ninth grade every year after that. We don't have a minimum grade point average. We don't have a, you know, a minimum math requirement or anything along those lines. And just like Ms. Dove said, we want to make sure that this is a place for everyone. We don't want this to be this elite school where we're taking the best of the best. We want to make sure that we're providing opportunity for all students. I came across something today, and this is just, this just speaks to opportunity. I came across something today in Fulton County where every year they have this game design competition. And when I looked at the results from last year's game design results, they have all these different categories, so animation and music and all of these different pieces to game design. And when I looked at the winners, I looked at the schools that they attended. There were students on that list who were elementary students from North County Schools, North County Middle Schools, North County High Schools. There was not one, not one South County winner in any of the categories whatsoever. And I know beyond a shadow of a doubt, just based on the interest that we've received, that a lot of our students are really interested in game design. And so we don't want to cut off any opportunities for any students who might excel in a certain area. Just because you may not have a 92% grade point average, you know, you may be an 80 student, but that doesn't mean that you can't be successful. And we want to make sure that we're offering that opportunity to all of our students across all of South Fulton County.
Well, that's fantastic. That's what I had heard. But I didn't hear you speak about geography. And that's been another part of the equation that people have expressed some concern.
Geography.
Meaning south meaning students in the southern part of the county? Or is it open to all Fulton County Schools?
So you may not know this, but there are actually two STEM schools that are being opened.
Yes, I did know that.
Yeah, one in the north, one in the south. So our school is open to all students, all South Fulton students. So from Tri-Cities all the way down to Creekside and everything in between. So our school is going to be open to all of those students.
Thank you. And I'm very excited, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments for Dr. Newbold or Kimberly Dove? If not, thank you both so much for presenting to the City Council tonight. Really do appreciate it. And Dr. Newbold, I'm looking forward to a follow-up conversation with you.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Thank you all. And really quick, I didn't get a chance, there wasn't a chat. So I was not able to put my email address in there. But if you all have business contacts, people who are in the STEM field, you'd like to connect us with, you can make that email connection by emailing me, newbolda, that's N-E-W-B-O-L-D, the letter A, newbolda@fultonschools.org. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for having us, Mayor and Council. We really appreciate it. We look forward to our new STEM school in Fairburn. Thank you.
And thank you all. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas to you all as well. Take care.
Thank you. Okay, council, exciting news. The next item on the agenda is our budget award from our finance department. Mr. Taylor, Roger Taylor, who's our interim finance director, are you on the line?
Mayor, he is here, give us one second, we have to get him, he's muted. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Well, the city of Fairburn has been awarded the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award again from the Government Finance Officers Association. And tonight, we have John Hosey, who is a member of the Carl Vincent Institute of Government, University of Georgia, to present the distinguished budget award to the city of Fairburn. Mr. Hosey, are you on the line?
I am, I am with you all, and I'm excited to be here with you all virtually. So good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. So yes, as Rodrick said, my name is John Hosey. I'm a Public Service Associate faculty member at the Carl Vincent Institute of Government. But I'm really here with you all this evening in my capacity as the past president of the Georgia Government Finance Officers Association. And then also as a member of our national association, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. So it is a great honor and a privilege to be with you all this evening to present to you, the elected body, the city of Fairburn, its citizens, and to Rodrick, and to all those people that work so hard in the Finneas Department, and then all those department directors that have frontline responsibilities on a day-to-day basis where the budget is concerned. So a little bit about this awards program. It was created in 1984, and it was created to assist local governments to prepare budget documents of the very highest quality that reflect both the guidelines established by the National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting and then GFOA's Best Practices on Budgeting. And then to recognize governments that excel in those areas. And so the budget, I think we would all agree, is the book of a thousand numbers. But at the end of the day, it's really more than that. So your budget is a policy document. It's probably the single most important piece of policy that you legislate in a year because it sets forth how the resources are going to be raised and then the priorities for spending those resources. So it is a policy document, it's a financial plan, it's an operating guide, and it's a communication tool for your citizens. So the city of Fairburn is one of 59 government entities in Georgia that received the award. And so that's a mix of counties, cities, authorities, special purpose districts like schools. And so again, just congratulations to you all this evening on this significant accomplishment.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hosey. And also thanks to Roger Taylor, who has done a fantastic job in the city of Fairburn as a contractor first, and then now as our interim finance director. Council members, do you have any comments for Mr. Taylor or for Mr. Hosey?
Congratulations to the finance department and his leadership. And thank you, Mr. Hosey, for the presentation.
Welcome, thanks for having me this evening.
And thank you for coming. Happy holidays.
Same to you, same to you.
Thank you. Okay, council, let's move right along. The next item on, it's not on our agenda, but I've asked Chief Matthews if he would make this announcement tonight to council. I thought it was very appropriate. We had something big that happened in the city last week, and I think that council needs to hear the good news. Chief Matthews, are you on the line?
Give us one second, we're looking at him.
Okay.
Chief, if you're on the line, would you please raise your hand?
I'm here, I'm here. Mayor, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, Mayor, council, good evening.
Good evening.
First, I'd just like to say thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And following up, Dr. Newbold and Rodrick, that's some great news, and I was really enjoying listening to both of them. But I do have some news to share. You know, 2020 has been a crazy year. But this year, you guys may or may not know that this year I was elected the fourth vice president of the Georgia Chiefs of Police Association. And just last week, Officer Lynch was selected as Officer of the Year for the, from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. And that's of the whole state of Georgia. Officer Lynch was given Officer of the Year.
Yes, awesome. Awesome.
And that's based on, that's based on several factors. But one is community policing, traffic enforcement, and just building relationships. And normally, they give this award to very large agencies. So this is, this is just a great, great thing, and I'm extremely proud of Officer Lynch and the things that Fairburn's been doing. Some of the things you guys may or may not know. 2019, we had a 16% reduction in crime. And then from 19 to 20, for the year, we've had a 32% reduction in crime. So with that STEM sale coming to Fairburn, over the last two years, we had a 50% reduction in crime. And I'm just extremely proud of the police department and also Mayor and Council for your guys' support.
Thank you.
Awesome, awesome.
Thank you. And I would ask each council member, if you see fit, if you would send Officer Lynch an email, a congratulatory email, I think he would appreciate that from us.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Chief Matthews.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, let's get down to business. Madam Clerk, is Attorney Randy Turner present tonight? I need to make sure that the records reflect that he's in attendance.
I am looking for him now, Mayor. I, he's calling in from a different number, and I'm trying to figure out which one, so.
Okay, okay, all right. So let's continue on with the agenda tonight. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the City Council agenda. And we have nine items on the agenda for tonight, and we have one public hearing. The first item on the agenda, with the public hearing, is the use permit for Grace Bible Church of Fayette. And Tariqa Peaks will be presenting that to us this evening. The first item on the regular agenda tonight is from the office of the mayor. And so Mayor and Council approve the public relations contract renewal with Dickerson Communications in the amount of $50,000. The second one is the fire department for approval of the 2020 fire engine in the amount of $375,000. Engineering is number three for Mayor and Council to approve test order number 11 in the amount of $25,000 with Pond and Company for professional engineering and land state architectural services. Number four on the agenda tonight is Parks and Recreation. Mr. John Culbridge for Mayor and Council to approve the usage agreement with the Department of National Resources for Kids Fishing Event. Exciting. Number five is property management. Mr. Harvey Stokes for Mayor and Council to approve the purchase of the 2021 Ford F-150 in the amount of $28,029 for Gail Hee, Deputy Director of Property Management. Number six on the agenda is Mr. Martin, John Martin, for Mayor and Council to approve the pre-trimmer contract with Kendall Vegetation Services not to exceed the amount of $60,000. Number seven is Tariqa Peaks for Mayor and Council to approve the resolution and authorize the City of Fairburn Main Street Board.
Yeah, I am trying to get in, I was.
Okay, I see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
I am so sorry.
Okay, the records will reflect that Mr. Turner is present. Number eight on the agenda tonight is for Mayor and Council to approve the resolution formally of accepting the dedication of land for public improvements for the Harris Road. And the last item on the agenda tonight is for Mayor and Council to approve the MEAD proposed power cell agreements with the city of Norcross. And that will also be presented by Attorney Randy Turner. Those are the nine items and the one public hearing. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda for tonight? Oh, move, Councilwoman Davis. Motion to approve by Councilwoman Davis and seconded by Councilwoman Heath. All those in favor? All those opposed? And motion carries 6-0. The agenda for tonight stands approved. Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing. And we're going to proceed with it. Didn't take very long. May I have a motion on the floor to open the public hearing?
Oh, move, Mayor, Councilwoman Whitmore.
Councilwoman Whitmore has made a motion to open the public hearing for the use permit for Grace Bible Church of Fayette. Tariqa Peaks, are you on the line? And do we have anyone? Tariqa Peaks, are you on the line, and do we have anyone, uh, for Grace Bible Church of Fayette present? And if so, uh, who's present?
Madam Mayor, I'm Joe Fowler, a lawyer in Douglasville. I'm on the line.
Okay.
Also joined by David Crowe, who is not yet unmuted, but he's one of the pastors with the church.
And I'm here, Mayor, as well.
Okay, okay, uh, Attorney Fowler, can you give me the second person's name again, the pastor?
Your Honor, he's the Reverend David Crowe, and he is on the line with us now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, a motion has been made by Councilman Heath to open the, uh, public hearing. Uh, we will now hear from our staff, Tariqa Peaks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Grace Bible Church of Fayette is requesting the approval of a use permit to operate a church at sixty-two twenty-five Campbellton Fairburn Road. The property is three point one eight seven acres and zoned O and I Office Institutional. The proposed use of the property for a church is consistent with the Twenty Thirty-Five Comprehensive Plan and surrounding land uses which are zoned O and I Office Institutional, R-two and R-one Single Family Residential. Also, the future land use map designates the subject property as office, and the office character area identifies a church and other places of worship as an appropriate land use. On November third, the zoning, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the petition and recommended approval conditional based on the use conformity with the Comprehensive Plan and future land use map. Staff tonight recommends approval conditional of this use permit petition.
Thank you, um, this is Peaks. Um, I will now hear from, uh, Attorney Joe Fowler or the Reverend David Crowe, who will be speaking, uh, for the applicants.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. I'll be delighted to speak for the church. These are friends of mine, good godly people who are seeking to start this church at the location that you see that's on the shared screen. We sent out the appropriate notices to all the neighbors. No one complained or objected in any way whatsoever. We then had the hearing before planning and zoning, and they unanimously recommended approval. Staff has recommended two conditions with various subparts, and Reverend Crowe and I have reviewed those in detail, and all of those are acceptable, and we respectfully request your approval of the special use permit so they can proceed with their services. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you so much, uh, Attorney Fowler. Um, are, is there anyone on the line? Um, Mister Parks? Um, watch for the show of hands. Is there anyone on the line who is in, uh, opposition of the, uh, Grace Bible Church?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, uh, council, do you have any questions for our staff member, Tariqa Peaks, or any questions for representatives for Grace Bible, uh, Church of Fayette? Do you have any questions for either? No questions? Okay, um, if there are no questions from council, and we don't have any, uh, parties in opposition of... May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move, Councilwoman Davis.
Councilwoman Davis has made a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second, Councilman Heath.
Councilman Heath has made a second to close. The public hearing is now closed. Uh, is there a motion on the floor to approve the use permit for Grace Bible Church?
So move, Mayor, Councilman Heath.
Second, Councilwoman Davis.
Motion made by Councilman Heath and seconded, uh, for Councilwoman Davis to approve the use permit. All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Although, all those opposed? That motion carries six-zero. Attorney Fowler and Reverend, uh, David Crowe, uh, your use permit has been approved.
Thank you.
Y'all don't have plans on Sunday. Y'all know where to go now.
Okay.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
God bless you all. Merry Christmas, everybody.
You too.
Merry Christmas.
You too. Okay, okay. All right, that was quick. The next item on the agenda is the Office of the Mayor for Mayor and Council to approve the Public Relations Contract Renewal with Dickerson Communications in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the contract, previous contract with, uh, Jeff Dickerson expired, uh, November the thirtieth, and it's, uh, the funds are in this year's budget. Are there any questions, or do, uh, is Mister Dickerson on the line?
Madam Mayor, we have a lot of phone numbers, uh, that are not recognized, but I don't have his name on here.
Okay. Okay, uh, council, do you have any questions, uh, concerning the renewal of the contract for the PR person, uh, Jeff Dickerson, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars? His contract runs through, uh, December first through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one.
Uh, Mayor, this is Councilwoman Davis.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question in reference to the dates. Uh, if the contract expired November thirtieth, twenty twenty, and it is now today, December fourteenth, um, if this is approved, then what happens December first through the thirteenth in reference to compensation and work?
Well, I would have to ask Mister Turner, but it's my understanding that, uh, that the contract, uh, even though the contract ended on December the thirtieth, uh, we could actually retroactive the contract to December the first. Uh, Mister Turner, are you on the line?
Uh, yes, yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay, can you answer that question for me?
The, the question is, um, whether the contract can be continued from the date of October until now?
The contract ended November the thirtieth, and so this, this contract will begin December the first, but she's saying today is the fourteenth, so what about compensation between the first and the, uh, fourteenth?
If, if, uh, if the board elects to continue the contract, it will be paid from those dates from November thirtieth until today and going forward.
Miss Davis? Yes, my other question was, was work done during those periods of time?
Yes. He's on contract. He's on a monthly contract.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, uh, Mister Jeff Dickerson is on the line.
Okay, uh, Mister Dickerson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members.
I'm, I'm, I'm good. How are you tonight?
Very good, thank you.
Okay, uh, did you, did, do you have any comments you would like to make to City Council concerning, um, what has been going on since, uh, you took over the, uh, contract, uh, I think it was in... When did we start this contract? May?
Um, yes, ma'am. Uh, I think that we have, uh, made some progress in our communications, uh, with members of the media. Uh, I think we've built relationships with, um, um, uh, members of the media in Fairburn. I think that we have more open and accessible lines of communication, uh, with members of the media, and I think that they're less likely, um, because they feel that they have some access, um, to focus solely on negative stories. Uh, the way the media operate is, um, they'd rather cover a plane crash than a landing. Um, and we need to be prepared for those at all times. I think that Fairburn has been. When issues have arisen, um, we have addressed them, uh, quickly, promptly, uh, and I think professionally. And, uh, it's been an honor to serve the city of Fairburn, and I would be honored to continue to.
Okay, I, I wanted to make counsel aware that we've had, uh, some instances where, uh, several instances where, um, Mister, uh, Dickerson, uh, um, actually had to come in and, and talk with the media and, uh, do some, uh, we've also done, uh, quite a few, uh, news releases. Um, and he's working, um, I don't know if, if council, I invited all council members to the last Water Authority meeting. Uh, we are not paying Mister Dickerson for his work with the Water Authority, but he's been a big access to, uh, the Water Authority, uh, in getting, uh, the, the news out about our permit and our engineering, uh, RFP, uh, which was, didn't play out a, uh, depth the way we wanted it to play out uh, with Channel Forty-six. Uh, it's my understanding that Channel Two and AJC is going to run another story. Uh, and so, uh, council, uh, he's been very instrumental in, in working with us with, uh, the Water Authority, and he's being paid, like I said, through the Water Authority, but also with, uh, some, some issues that has arisen in the city uh, with our fire department. Uh, he's taken hold to that. Uh, and, uh, we have several news releases that, uh, has, has gone out uh, that he's been responsible for, and, um, and I'm quite pleased with the work that he's doing. So does any council member have any other questions, uh, for Mister Dickerson?
Yes, Mayor, this is Councilwoman Portis Jones.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so could you please be, uh, more specific about those items that Mister Dickerson has worked on the behalf of the city, uh, for which, for which he, um, is to be compensated?
I would be more than happy to send you that, that, that information on tomorrow.
Where you're asking us to approve this agreement tonight, though, Mayor?
Yes.
So it would have been, um...
Well, Mister Dickerson's work is not contingent, this contract is not contingent on what he has done. Um, and, and, and I'll be more than happy, as I said, I'll be more than happy to forward that. Uh, and, and I have forwarded and requested. There's nothing in his contract that, that specifically says that he's supposed to give reports to the City Council members. Now, uh, I'll be more than happy to give...
I'm just, I am asking for you to share...
On tomorrow.
With this body, what the issues have been, um, and it would have been, um, in the best interest of this body to have been made aware of those issues, uh, prior to tonight.
Those were day-to-day operations, um, Miss Portis Jones. Now, uh, if any other council members have any other questions they want to ask, uh, my statement and my position right now is that I will forward to council, uh, what Mister Dickerson has performed with the city in the last, if you're looking for the last thirty days, the last sixty days, we'll send that to you. Uh, but I do not have the information before me at this present time. So council, do you have any other questions?
Yes, Mayor, this is Councilwoman Davis.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I would like to put forth a recommendation, um, in, as a part of the letter of agreement under his responsibilities, um, and that would be, uh, to add monthly detailed reports uh, as to what he has done and accomplished on a monthly basis. Since we are paying out five thousand dollars a month, I think it's not asking a lot to get a monthly report from Mister Dickerson in reference to what he has done and what he's working on.
Okay, I'll put that before council. Um, City Council members, you, um, uh, Councilwoman Davis has made a recommendation. Um, it's before the body for discussion.
Mayor, Councilman Heath, uh, I, uh, I, I'm for that, uh, making the recommendation that, uh, Ms. Davis made. Uh, but, uh, by far, uh, I think we've had a lot of the discussion about this in previous council meetings, and, uh, I'm, I want to just call, uh, make the motion to call for a vote.
Uh, Councilwoman, uh, Heath has, has, has made a recommendation that we add uh, back to Mister Dickerson contract that we provide us with a, a, a monthly report. Um, and before we call for the vote, uh, and to get a second on that, uh, uh, Councilman Heath, uh, let me ask council, are you, is council requesting a monthly report from Mister Dickerson? If so, let me get a motion on the floor, and a second, uh, for that. Councilwoman Davis, do you want to put a motion on the floor to add that to this contract?
I move that we add, uh, monthly detailed reports to, um, the letter of agreement.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Davis has requested that we, uh, add to this contract a monthly report, uh, from Mister Dickerson, uh, to be added to this letter of agreement. Is there a second?
Councilwoman Portis Jones, I second.
Councilwoman Portis Jones has made the second. Uh, are all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, are those any opposed? That motion carries six-zero. Uh, we will make sure that it is added to, uh, this contract that he provides the city with monthly reports. Is there a second to, uh, uh, the motion made by Councilman Heath to call for the vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Smallwood, second.
Second made from, uh, Mayor, uh, Pro Tim to call for the vote, the vote, uh, uh, I'm going to call for the vote now. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the contract for Jeff Dickerson, um, Public Relations in the amount of fifty thousand dollars beginning December the first, twenty twenty, ending on September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, with, um, a monthly report being added to the, um, letter of agreement? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let me, let me call for, uh, each, each council member so that we'll know, uh, what the vote is instead of, uh, listening to everyone. Uh, Councilman Heath, yea, yea or nay? Yea, being yes? Is Councilman Heath there?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, this is Councilman Heath. I keep getting muted, uh, when very important stuff is to, to be, uh, voiced, and I would appreciate it if I'd stop being muted.
Okay.
Uh, but yes, I, I, I'm voting, uh, y- yes, that, uh, I'm, I won't go prove it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you, at this time, um, make sure all of council members are unmuted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Councilman Heath is yes?
Yes.
Councilman Whitmore?
Yes.
Councilman Whitmore is yes. Councilman Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
I'm gonna have to say nay.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman, uh, Portis Jones?
Nay.
Councilman Palling?
Yay.
We have three nays and three gays, and as the mayor of the city, I have, uh, uh, the power to break the tie, and I vote yes. So it, it passes four to three. Next item on the agenda. It's item number two, for Mayor and Council to approve the purchase of a Twenty Twenty Fire Engine in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, Cornelius Robinson, Chief Robinson, are you there?
Yes, ma'am. I'm here this evening. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor and Council, uh, the Fire Department is coming before you to, uh, approve the purchase of a new Twenty Twenty Pierce Fire Engine through Ten Eight Fire and Safety Equipment of Georgia. Uh, this purchase included through an awarded assistance firefighter grant for the Fire Department during the FY twenty twenty-one budget. Uh, the AFG grant was approved in the amount of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand one forty-two in federal funding with the required contribution of non-federal funds of seventeen thousand eight fifty-seven fourteen for a total approved budget of three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, this unit will replace our Twenty, Twenty... This unit will replace our twenty, twenty-eight-year-old engine that was built by Ewan. The engine served the, the city well during its time. It is recommended that Mayor and Council approve this purchase of the new twenty twenty engine from Ten Eight Fire and Safety Equipment of Georgia for the city of Fairborn's Fire Department.
Okay, and thank you so much, Chief Robinson, for getting that great.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome. Council members, do you have any questions for Chief Robinson concerning the purchase of this fire engine?
Mayor?
Councilman Heath.
Davis, oh, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Davis?
All I want to say is congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Councilman Heath?
Chief, with it being the month of December and almost twenty twenty-one, why wouldn't they have the twenty twenty-ones in stock to where we could do this? Or have you already had this one built prior to all of this?
Well, this was a, a, a stock unit. The twenty twenty-one stock unit is a lot more than the three. Yes, sir. So we were trying to stay within the, you know, that budget.
Yes, well, great. Good work. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Heath, we're actually looking at something like seven, eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
Wow.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, any more questions for Chief Robinson concerning the purchase of this fire engine in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor to approve?
So move Councilwoman Davis.
Motion made by Councilwoman Davis to approve, seconded by Councilman Heath. All those in favor? Are those opposed? That motion carries six zero. Okay, Chief, you got your fire engine.
Thank you, thank you. I'm very excited.
Okay, the next item on the agenda tonight is item number three from engineering. Mr. Lester Thompson, for mayor and council to approve task order number eleven in the amount of twenty-five thousand with Ponding Company of Professional Engineering and Landscape Architectural Services. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
City of Fairborn entered into a master services agreement with Ponding Company on July twenty-second, twenty nineteen for on-call professional engineering and landscape architectural services. The agreement with Pond was approved with the understanding that task orders associated with professional engineering and landscape architectural services would be issued on an as-needed basis. As such, Task Order eleven, for an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, has been submitted to Mayor and Council for approval. The budget impact is twenty-five thousand dollars, and it will come out of the Public Works Administration Professional Services account. As such, staff recommends approval. Any questions?
Council, any questions for Mr. Thompson concerning this task order? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor to approve Task Order number eleven in the amount of twenty-five thousand for Ponding Company?
Mayor Pro Tim Smallwood, so moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tim Smallwood and was seconded by Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
Seconded by Councilwoman Davis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposing it? That motion carries six zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Culbright, for mayor and council to approve the usage agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for kids fishing event. I'm very excited about this, and I just may buy me a fishing pole and come out there and fish with the kids. Okay, give us the, give us the, give us the lowdown on it.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, good evening, Madam Mayor and the Honorable Councilmember of City of Fairborn. We're excited about this opportunity to provide another outlet of recreation for our young people. We approached the Department of Natural Resources about restocking the lake upon, some call it, at Duncan. I know that's something that can be done from time to time. And we were initially told that there weren't any fish available, but later on I got a call from the Rome Office of Department of Natural Resources, and they said that they do have some fish that they would make available to us. And the only thing they required us to do is have a, a tournament with the young people ages sixteen and under, and we're excited about that. They will provide us with eighty rods and reels to use, on loan now, not on loan.
Okay.
I have talked with other entities who will, who will give us some, some sponsorship funds to buy some rods. I like, I would like to give them as their awards after the tournament, a rod and reel. And the parents will be involved in this endeavor because we want the parents involved with the kids. And we'll have orientation sections for the parents, safety classes for the parents and the young people post-pandemic, of course. During the months of Ju-, January through March, they'll, they'll stock the lake, probably in January, they said, or late December this month, if we get approval here tonight.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Culbright. Also, do you have any questions for Mr. Culbright concerning this agreement with DNR?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Have these fish agreed to be caught?
Councilman Heath, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do they say what type of fish that we'd be, catfish, brim?
Catfish. The lake already has, I believe, brim in it now and other species of fish, but that's one of the fish that they would, they would donate to us.
Okay, great. That's wonderful.
Okay, Mayor, it's Councilwoman Davis.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a, a comment and a question. Kudos to you, Mr. Culbright.
Thank you, madam.
For this activity. I think it's a, it's an excellent opportunity for our kids. It will be an excellent opportunity for our kids. And I have, my question is really not particularly related to this. This is related to parks and recreations. Have we done, you know, when, no longer receiving reports from directors, so are we, have we done anything of, by way of virtual activities for our youth? I mean, parks and recreation before the pandemic used to be popping with kids with, you know, all different things with, you know, that we were doing with them. Have we done anything with our youth? Okay.
We've done two things, and we've got some feedback from students saying that they are on the computer all the time with the virtual classrooms, and that some of the kids are burnt out. I've gotten that. That's unofficial. The other thing is, we are going to put some virtual classes online. In two weeks, we'll have a gardening class that's going to be for the program toward the seniors. We will be getting other classes brought online. Hopefully, we'll have something where we can give an orientation to the fishing online. Other activities, we have not. We are, we are in communication with the organizations that have had organized sports at Duncan Park, and they're sitting and waiting to for the pandemic to end.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Councilman Heath?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Culbright, I have had several complaints that the VFW has not been allowed to open up to play bingo. So is, is that something that may be in the near future?
I would assume it would be something that can be done in the near future, given approval on the status of the closing from Mayor and Council. I would not authorize them to do it without some approval from Mayor and Council.
Oh, no, no. What I'm just saying, though, is it getting to a point that, that they could foreseeably, you know, in the next month or two, open, reopen for this bingo? Because I've got elderly ladies and gentlemen that are complaining every time they see me. Why don't y'all let the VFW open up? You know, we had to, we had to go to Union City to the, I can't put Moose Lodge or whatever it is up there, or whatever like that, and they said, you know, that's some of the enjoyment that we get, so I, I told them that I would bring it to, before you to see, you know, what's the possibility of that happening.
Let, let, let me do this, Councilwoman. I prefer to discuss that administratively with the mayor and to see if there's.
Okay. Okay, wonderful. At least that gives me a little bit of hope I can share with them.
And, and council, maybe that's something that we need to have a full discussion on, you know, whether or not you want to allow the VFW to open. Understand that once we take the barriers down, any and everybody will come through those gates. And, and so we, and so you've got to have somebody out there to actually monitor that they're actually going up to the VFW, they're not going anywhere else in the park, you know. So that's a conversation that we should have, and I'm thinking that maybe around the first of the year, we should have that conversation as a council. Is everybody on board with that, doing that?
Oh, that's, that's right.
Yeah, Mayor, I am. I mean, I think that's a great idea. If we have somebody monitoring the gate, is there some way we can block off, have a direct route around the pond that will go straight to that building and block the other streets off or something like that?
Mr. Culbright, it's going, it's going to actually take officers out there to do it.
Yes, yes.
Because, you know, people are just not susceptible to listening to regular staff. So it's going to have to take someone in uniform, and, you know, it's going to take some more, some officers to come out there and do it. And I don't know if, if Chief has enough officers that he can pull off of the streets and and send over to Duncan Park on the days that they're having bingo, just to monitor where they're going in the park. And that's just something we just, the logistics that we're just going to have to work out as, as a council.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm more than willing to put it on my notes and bring it back around December, I'm sorry, January, so that we can have further discussion on possibly reopening it for the VFW and the logistics behind it.
Yeah, sounds good.
This is Councilwoman Portis Jones.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd, I'd like to add for consideration, given that we're going into winter, and, you know, people are indoors. I've had numerous requests about the, the opportunity to just walk around the lake. And so I'd like to put that as part of the equation, if, if we're going to open at all, to consider how we might logistically allow just walking around the lake. Maybe we can put up barricades to the entrance to the other part of the park to, to prevent that from happening, but just to allow people to get outside and to get fresh air.
Okay, and we'll add that to the agenda for discussion also. Thank you, Councilwoman Portis Jones.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, is, I, I got off track. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the usage agreement with the Department of Natural Resources?
So move, Councilman Heath.
A motion made by Councilwoman Heath and seconded by Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposing? That motion carries six zero. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number five from Mr. Harvey Stokes, and we're so glad to have Harvey back with us. You never know how much you miss a person until they're actually gone. And the month that he was on, he was really missed here in the city of Fairborn. For mayor and council to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-one Ford F-150 in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine dollars for Gail Hicks. Mr. Stokes, you're on the line.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've come before you tonight for the purchase of a twenty twenty-one Ford F-150 for the deputy director of property management, Miss Gail Hicks. We budgeted thirty thousand dollars from this year's budget for the purpose of this vehicle. I was able to go online on the state contract and get this vehicle for twenty-eight thousand, yes, twenty-eight thousand. That's my figure, twenty-eight thousand and twenty-nine dollars, and that's equipping this vehicle with nine safety features that I feel like we must have to make this vehicle safe out in the street, including the driving lights that so can make it more visible. But the vehicle is scheduled for delivery about the last part of February. I should be able to get it about the last part of February, but no later than the middle of March. The F-150s have been a popular truck, and because of the virus that we're going through, Ford Motor Company had laid off some people at the plant, that put the production behind. You've got more demand for this truck than anything now, but I asked Mayor and Council to approve this purchase.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Stokes concerning this twenty twenty-one? And believe it or not, a female wants an F-150 truck. We tried to persuade her to get an SUV. She was not having it. She wanted her a truck. So, and I know Gail is on the line this evening also. So council, do you have any questions for Mr. Stokes concerning the purchase of this twenty twenty-one Ford F-150 that was budgeted in the FY twenty twenty-one budget?
Well, Mayor, I don't have any questions regarding the vehicle, but I would love to meet the individual who will be driving it.
Okay, well, 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 this is, this is a good time for me to actually, and I was going to send an email out on tomorrow. This is actually a good time for me to invite all council members. Because of the pandemic, we were unable to have our yearly luncheon for all departments. We normally do it over at the youth center every year, but this year we could not do that. And so what we decided to do on Friday, the eighteenth, at twelve o'clock, was each individual department will have their own Christmas luncheon. And it's being catered by Casablanca, and we have staff that will go by and pick up each department's lunch, and they will eat in the building with themselves. And so I would like to invite all council members, if you have time on Friday, come by the different departments, City Hall. We will be sharing our lunch on Friday with the youth center. And Police Department will be eating at twelve o'clock, so is the Fire Department, municipal court, our Street Department. If I'm not mistaken, Harvey, the Street Department is at the annex, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's correct. They're going to be at the annex. So council members, if you have any time on Friday, stop in. And, Ms. Portis Jones, you'll be able to see Gail Hicks. She will be there on, on Friday with her staff.
Well, could we hear from her tonight? Hello, yes?
Gail, all right, there she is.
Peter.
All right, thank you.
How are you doing this evening?
Doing great, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you so much. I look forward to meeting all of you in person.
And how long have you been on board? And where do you?
I've been there, I've been with the city for a month now.
Uh-huh. And where do you come from?
I come from the city of Riverdale for fourteen years.
Okay.
Wow.
Doing the same thing I'm doing now, so I'm no stranger to the street work.
Okay.
And council, I understand that she can patch a hole faster than any of our guys.
You go, girl.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for introducing yourself. Well, thank you for introducing yourself and welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Is there any way that we could get a list of where the departments are going to be having their lunch? If it's not in their regular department area? Uh, is that possible? Just get an email so they know where to go?
Yeah, there's only two deviations from their departments. And that's uh, the youth center is coming over to the City Hall because it's, it's, it's only like three or four of them. And uh, and we just decided to let the Street Department go down to the Annex. So everybody else is going to be in their regular departments.
Okay, alright, thank you.
But we'll be more than happy to put in an email to uh, everyone tomorrow morning. Um, I'll make sure that that email goes out before 11 o'clock on tomorrow.
Okay, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, and so, so everybody knows, everybody's eating the same thing. So uh, so you're not going to get different foods in different departments, okay? It's all going to be the same. Okay, okay. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the purchase of the F-150 in the amount of $28,029?
Councilman Whitmore.
Councilman Whitmore has made a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mayor Prokem Smallwood.
Uh, seconded by Mayor Prokem Smallwood. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You're very welcome. Um, the next item on the agenda is Mr. Don Martin from our Utilities Department. From Mayor and Council to approve the tree trimmer contract with Kendall Vegetation Services. Not to exceed the amount of $60,000. Uh, Mr. Martin, would you explain what's going on with this contract and the trees uh, trimming here in the city of Fairburn?
Yes, I would. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, on the agenda tonight, the Utilities Department, uh, specifically the Electric Division. Is seeking approval of the agreement for Kendall Vegetation Services to trim. And to clear tree limbs and trees and vegetation from around the overhead circuits. Uh, from the two major substations. The Council approval will authorize the mayor to sign an agreement not to exceed $60,000. The maps that are attached to your packets, they show the uh, power coverage of the two substations. That's F-0882. That one is located at uh, Highway 29 and Northwest Broad Street. And W-1222, which is located at Spence Road. These substations encompass the areas that are heavily impacted where, when you have bad storms and squirrels. They are the main culprits of the major power outages in the city. We just anticipate the areas that you see will uh, consist of two to three weeks. Of this work being done at 40 hours a work week. This should take no longer than that, but you know, it may be done earlier considering if some unknowns might come out of the way. However, with the fall and leave, this will work to the city's advantage. Due to the areas in question, they're clearly visible. You can see all trees and limbs and you can see where it's been cut away from the line. So this works good for us in that area. But also moving ahead in the future, we anticipate clearing the tree limbs and vegetation from the other substations. And those are FO-872, which is around the Duncan Park in Harbor Lake. Uh, FO-852, which is Holly Hill Park area. And FO-862, which is the Avalon subdivision. With us starting this year, this will be able to clear everything and prevent all these frequent outages and everything. So we're asking the Mayor and Council to please honor this request for approval.
Okay, uh, Mr. Martin, every time I hear that there's a storm, I think about tree fallings. And I'm especially concerned about uh, uh, Rivertown Road. And I'm, I'm thinking that Miss Portis Jones feels the same sentiment over there. Because once those uh, trees, those big pine trees hit those lines, uh, it takes out a lot of residents over there. So uh, council, uh, do you have any questions concerning a badly needed uh, tree trimming? Uh, uh, project here in the city of Fairburn?
Uh, Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
First, I wanted to know, how do we handle this before? Did our staff try to deal with all of this before?
Yes.
Okay, alright, that, that, okay. Uh, yeah, okay. Uh, so this is the first contract that we have had for these services?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now was this bid it out or how did we choose Kendall?
Kendall is one of the ECG's recommended selected bidders. They're always like your government contract bidder. So they in the screen them, as you see, uh, attached with your package, they got a, a good certificate of liability. So with them doing high voltage, they have the equipment and they surpass our staff even in doing this work. They're very expert at it. They had a proper PPE, which is personal protection equipment, and they know their job.
Okay, so they were the best, the best contractor for the services that we are requesting? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Now, one thing I did not see is the term of the contract. Is it, is it an annual contract or? Or as needed or?
Hmm, it, it's a, it's a term, it's a term contract to the point to where that we're not to exceed the, the $60,000 mark. Uh, as you look at the map, the coverage that it covers will en, will encompass that. Now, anything extra due to those points, or we run into some difficulty? They will not get any approval beyond that point unless the city of Fairburn approves it.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Okay, you're welcome.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Martin concerning uh, the tree trimmer contract with Kendall Vegetation Services? Is there a motion on the floor to approve?
Allen, so moved.
Motion made by Councilwoman Allen, is there a second?
Second, Councilwoman Portis Jones.
Seconded by Councilwoman Portis Jones, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposing? That motion carries six zero. Uh, the next item on the agenda is uh, Ms. Peaks for Mayor and Council to approve the resolution. And authorize the City of Fairburn Main Street Board.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the city of Fairburn joined the Georgia Main Street Network as an affiliate in April of 2017. As an affiliate of the Georgia Main Street Program, the city is required by the Georgia Downtown Affiliate Network. Memorandum of Understanding, which is renewed annually, to establish a Main Street Board. The Fairburn Main Street Board's mission is to promote historic preservation in downtown Fairburn. Showcasing traditional assets of the community while also incorporating the Georgia Main Street Four Point Approach of Design. Organization, Promotions, and Economic Development to recruit and retain new businesses. Tonight's staff is requesting approval of the resolution to establish and authorize the City of Fairburn's Main Street Board. I'll take any questions at this time.
Uh, Councilwoman Davis, okay, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Heath?
Councilwoman Heath, I have a question. Um, is this going to help uh, with our LCI? Does that have a purpose?
Well, actually, no, the, the establishment of the board is really based on our affiliation with the Georgia Main Street Program. That is a part of the requirement for us to create a Main Street Board, a Main Street Board of Directors. But to answer your question specifically related to the LCI Downtown Master Plan. Um, I do have to create a core group of um, people, of stakeholders for that actual, actual project. And the plan is to actually engage some of the um, board members in that process. So they would have some input as well in the Downtown Main Street Master Plan Project.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Any more questions concerning the resolution? Um, concerning the Fairburn Main Street Board?
Um, yes, Mayor, this is Councilwoman Davis. Uh, can you share with me, um, Ms. Peaks, the selection process of the board? I see the board is made up of about three of our Downtown Development Authority members. Um, what is the selection process for those that are on the board?
And what we did, Councilwoman Davis, we actually um, probably, I think we started around late summer, early fall. We actually did a complete advertisement of not only the Main Street Board. Um, vacant positions as well as our Planning and Zoning Commission and our historic reservation. We did that in order to recruit um, volunteers to serve on various boards throughout the city. And once we closed that process, myself as well as um, the Main Street Manager Sylvia Abernathy. We conducted um, interviews, virtual interviews with all those that showed interest in serving on the Main Street Board. And one of the criteria, or several criterias we wanted um, the members to possess is to be um, downtown business owners. Or downtown property owners. We wanted um, both who had a background in business, commercial real estate. And also those who served on our Downtown Development Authority, um, showed an interest in um, being on the board as well. Initially, because we were under some time constraints to get our board established um, by December 30th of this year. Um, we decided to, to ask some of our Main, uh, Downtown Development Authority members. Who were willing to participate on the Main Street Board. And they were willing, and so there were you, that's where the three members, Wanda Appleby, Danita Jones, and Paris Hill volunteered to serve. On the Main Street Board for the first one-year appointment.
Okay, so are, are you saying that you will be looking for others to just give those three a break? They seem, you know what I'm saying?
So, so this, the plan is everyone serves a one-year term. And we did that pretty much so we could meet our deadline for December 30th of this year. Um, the affiliate, the Georgia Main Street Program, they changed the requirements for affiliate. Before, the affiliate programs did not have any type of certification process. They didn't have any reporting process. And then they just changed it midstream where now anyone in the program, now you have to go and do reports every year. Have an annual work plan, have a board, have at least a part-time person on staff to carry the Main Street Program. And so we were really under the gun to try to get this done before the end of the year. And so that's why we decided to have everyone serve a one-year term. And then after that one-year term, then we would, you know, get more people who would be interested in serving on the Main Street Board. And Sylvia Abernathy, our Main Street Manager, um, it is really hard, difficult to get. Um, sometimes uh, people to commit to serving on some boards. And that was one of the issues too, that we, you know, ran into was trying to get people who would be willing to serve. And who would have the background that we were looking for being downtown business owners. But Sylvia has um, been speaking to some of the board members, some of the business owners in downtown who have expressed some interest. But again, because of that deadline, we really was just under the gun. And um, the, the Downtown Development Authority members just stepped up and said they would be willing to serve.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Peaks, for that explanation. And I can understand about your deadlines and stuff. But I also appreciate that um, you will be looking for particularly business owners that are downtown to have. You know, a majority of them on the board. And um, the way you've set it up for them to have just one year to give you an opportunity to kind of, you know, work that out. I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Peaks. Are there any other questions uh, for Ms. Peaks concerning this resolution? Okay, is there a motion on the floor to approve the resolution and authorize the City of Fairburn uh, Main Street Board?
Councilman Heath, so moved.
Motion made by Councilwoman Heath, is there a second?
Second, Mayor Prokem Smallwood.
Seconded by Mayor Prokem Smallwood. All those in favor?
Aye. And, and I just want to make a note, I see James, well, Councilman Whitmore just talking away. He, you must be muted.
Uh, Councilman Whitmore, um.
None of your motions are coming through. Can you? Now we can't.
Actually, I, I've been, uh, I haven't been muted.
Okay, okay, okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries six zero. Thank you so much. And thank you, Ms. Peaks, for doing such an excellent job with the uh, Main Street uh, program.
You're welcome, Mayor. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Final two uh, agenda items are from our, our city attorney, uh, Randy Turner. Uh, the first one is for Mayor and Council to approve the resolution formally accepting the dedication of land for public improvements for Harris Road.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. And I, I want to again apologize for my late entry tonight. I, I actually locked myself out of the office right before the meeting tonight.
No boy.
And uh, but I, I worked it out and here, and here I am. But uh, the Harris Road project, back in 2012, when, when the Harris Road uh, was first uh, improved. We accepted a dedication pursuant to a plat, which was, that, which was dated back in 2012. And we, uh, that plat, for whatever reason, had not been recorded until earlier this year. And I'm not, I, I, I really can't explain that. It was, it was right of the transition between our, from our Public Works Director uh, back in 2012, Mr. uh, Boucher. And it, it didn't get recorded. We recorded that plat back in, back in the summer of this year. Uh, but the DOT uh, continuing uh, to do some improvements along that roadway. Uh, we're trying to uh, establish title and do a transfer of title. Uh, from uh, from the city of Fairburn into the DOT. Uh, where un, they were uncomfortable doing that because the city of Fairburn had not actually entered into a formal acceptance. Uh, of that dedication pursuant to that plat. So what you have in front of you is we're trying to clean that up. So that the plat was recorded in the summer, but now we're, they ask us to approve a resolution formally accepting. The dedications for public improvement pursuant to that plat back in 2012. So they can now do a additional title transfer from some of that property over into the DOT. And so what you're looking at right now is a cleaning up of all of that activity that has occurred for those, for those many years. Uh, uh, to allow DOT to, to accept some, actually to transfer some property into the DOT. For additional improvements to the Harris Road project. Uh, and that's what we're trying to do because they asked it to, asked us to do it. And uh, that's what this resolution is, is to formally accept the dedication of property pursuant to that plat.
Okay, council, do you have any questions for Attorney Turner concerning uh, this resolution? Uh, for the dedication of the land for public improvement for Harris Road?
Councilman Heath?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my question is, where is this uh, land uh, at? Is it on the dirt portion of Harris Road or on the paved portion?
The, the land that the DOT is attempting to acquire is along the, the, the dedication of roadway that the city took in 2012. Which would have transferred that property into the city of Fairburn. And now they are trying to take a piece of it to do an additional uh, improvement that they have been working on. And when they were doing title on this property, they were, they were not satisfied that the city of Fairburn had actually taken that property. And I will tell you that I have tried to, over the, you know, last several years. And I think we have actually done a very good job of that over the last several years. Of making sure that there are formal accepts, acceptance of these dedications. And they were just not, they didn't feel comfortable. The attorneys for, for uh, DOT uh, did. didn't feel comfortable that there was enough in the chain of title to establish the City of Fairburn had taken that property. So they wanted to make sure that that, that that additional property was, was actually firmly within, uh, ownership of the City of Fairburn so that they can now take it and make it part of, uh, their additional improvement.
Well, the reason I ask is because if I'm not mistaken, the dirt portion of Harris Road is in South Fulton City.
Uh, this property, this subject of this is in the City of Fairburn.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, though, because I, I looked at the map, uh, on, on the comp, uh, on, on my cellphone, and of course couldn't get really a, a good look at it. But I was trying to figure out where, where it was at, so it looks like it's in the middle.
And I will say, it probably would have been more, um, it, it would have been more clear. I, I submitted two exhibits to this resolution that, that are referred to in the resolution, and I noticed that they were not attached to the agenda. But, um, but, but those, it, it is not any new property. It was only property included the original dedication of their, of Mr. Hughes's property to the City of Fairburn.
Okay, all right, well, thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions for Attorney Turner? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the resolution formally accepting the dedication of land for public improvement for Harris Road?
Councilman Heath, so moved.
Motion made by Councilman Heath. Is there a second?
Seconding, Councilman Whitmore.
Seconded by Councilman Whitmore. All those in favor? Uh, is there anyone opposing? And motion carries six-zero. The last item on the agenda tonight is also our city attorney, um, Randy Turner, for mayor and council to approve the MEAG proposed power sale agreement with the City of Norcross.
Yes, so, um, Mayor and Council, there are two, there are two agreements attached to this agenda item. And one of them is to, uh, for the City of Fairburn to acquire some excess capacity from MEAG, from the City of Fairburn. The, the second agreement is to, to acquire excess reserve capacity. And I have, I'm, I, I gotta tell you, at this moment, I'm not really, I'm not really involved and haven't been involved in the actual, uh, details of this capacity and why the City of Fair, Fairburn is acquiring it. So I only reviewed the substance of the contracts that were involved, and I found no issues with them. They asked me to, they asked me to provide to them a letter of opinion that the City of Fairburn could in fact acquire these, which I, which I firmly believe the city can, and I drafted those agreements. So I, I really, at this point in time, I don't know how to address exactly why the City of Fairburn wants to acquire this act, excess capacity. And, um, I was, I, I'd have to defer to the Utilities Department in turn, to, to the question of why we're acquiring it, and it, you know, is it something that we need? And it's, uh, I, I just can't, I, I honestly, I can't get really behind the details on it. I only required the transactional documents involved with it to determine whether or not those transactional documents were solid and they were in compliance with law. But to the extent that they are, and the city has presented them for approval, I would say that these, these contracts at least, they are sound, and we certainly have the authority to acquire these, uh, this additional capacity through, from Norcross.
Mister, uh, Mister Martin, are you on the line?
Yes, Mayor, I am.
Okay, you have been having conversations, you've been on the conference calls, uh, and the Board of Directors meetings with, uh, Mister Fuller, um, uh, with, uh, uh, MEAG, have you not?
Yes, I have, Mayor, and I would like to quote on it. Um, you know, we have MEAG that, uh, they have conducted purchases. And what most municipalities do during this time is acquire the excess and the reserve capacity for if you have the extended wintering months where you might need the extra power. Trying to bid out and trying to acquire additional power during this time. In that time, you are subject to the increases in, uh, the ability of other municipalities to sell that power. So what you do is you put it in reserve, and considering our fact, we have additional, uh, subdivisions that are coming. We've got some new development that might feed off our regular projected capacity. So you plan ahead with it. So the City of Norcross has agreed to sell us for six dollars per kilowatt a year, those there. So we took the minimum of that in the excess capacity, which will have us there. And just in case we tend to go over, we got the two thousand eight hundred and thirteen kilowatt capacity just to buffer us off for the fiscal year.
And, and I would like to say there that what, you know, with, what Mister Martin is saying is that this, this, um, adjustment and readjustment of these, uh, of the capacity and the, and the excess reserve capacity, these are, these are very, uh, these are very common contracts that MEAG comes up to adjust all of the, uh, the capacities that exist out there between all the MEAG cities. And so what Mister Martin is describing there is that, you know, there have been discussions between our city and MEAG about these, these capacity issues. And Norcross, on the other end of the equation, has decided that they could give up certain amount of capacity that MEAG, that MEAG owns, so that the city could, uh, use it for their own benefit.
Also, do you have any questions for, um, Mister, uh, Martin? Or, or, uh, I think Attorney Turner has been clear that, uh, he's reviewed the contract and it is in compliance. So, uh, do you have any questions for either?
Uh, Councilman Heath.
Councilman Heath.
Uh, yes, ma'am, this is basically, I think, for you. Um, Plant Vogel Three has not, uh, come online yet. Is, is that the reason we're having to do this?
That, that is one of the reasons that we're having to, uh, to, to purchase our reserve. Uh, but just like John said, just in case, uh, we need it for the winter months. We really don't know what, what, what the winter is going to bring. Uh, and the last thing that we need to be in a position where we cannot supply our, our, uh, citizens with the power that they need, uh, uh, for the winter. But that is one of the reasons, uh, uh, you know, uh, Plant Vogel was supposed to come on, come online, uh, what, um, uh, several months ago. Yeah, well, yeah, and it, it just hasn't happened yet. And so, uh, uh, you know, they still, um, going through the phases, uh, of, uh, trying to renegotiate some contracts. Uh, you know, some of the folks that had contracts, uh, they fell through, they went out of business. And so, uh, it's just been a mess. Uh, but, uh, um, we actually need to make sure that we do have in reserve what we need for, for our citizens.
Right.
So I think that.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go on, I'm sorry.
I, I remember, uh.
You said you remember.
When the previous mayor was in, uh, in office, that we had to get, uh, uh, Griffin to sell us some of their access.
Yes.
So that we would have the power. So, yeah, yeah, I'm familiar with this process, like, I, I, I like that.
Okay.
And, and also, we're, we're only buying this capacity with, that, if we need it. All right, so these contracts are being put in place to acquire this capacity if we have a need for it.
Got it.
Okay, um, Mayor, this is Councilwoman Davis.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just for clarity, this will not have any adverse effect on the cost to our citizens, right? I just want to put that out there.
No.
Okay.
This will not, this wouldn't, they, their bills will not go up nor go down.
Right, okay. I just, I, I mean, I, if citizens are looking at this, I just wanted that to be clear. Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
It, it does not, it does not affect the cost of power to the city. It just provides, uh, assurance that, that the access to power is there.
All right.
Uh, Mayor, uh, Councilman Heath, I got one other question.
Yes.
Uh, what happens if we don't use that? Uh, is there still a cost to, to the city?
Well, it's actually in reserve, so the, the contract will, uh, they will not charge us unless we have to actually, uh, uh, purchase this, uh, uh, the power. We don't, yeah, it's, it's like a layaway plan.
Yeah.
Okay, if we need it, we can get it. But if we don't, uh, reserve it and we need it, it, it may not be there.
Got you, okay.
And it also, Mayor, might be at the price we might not have negotiated for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor, one question.
Yes.
Does, uh, Mister Martin, does he have any, Mister Martin, do you have any information of what's happening with, uh, uh, Plant Three and Plant Four, nuclear plants?
Not at this time. I, I've seen some, uh, stuff with it as far as repairs, um, but nothing concrete. I'm thinking, just like the mayor said, going through transition on different fuel levels, on different ways to provide power. We've looked at increasing coal and, you know, and shipping. And it's, and like you say, with the pandemic, everyone is having a lot of different things going on within their municipalities. And they're looking to sell some, or looking at overbudgeted for what they anticipate. So, yes, they're looking to sell some to balance off, and some looking for to acquire, but not expecting the wintering months, that's, that's kind of putting everything up in the air.
Thank you, Speaker.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion on the floor to approve the MEAG proposed power sale agreements, Eric Two, uh, with the City of Norcross? Uh, Mrs. City Attorney, do I need, uh, can I do this in one motion?
You can do it in one motion, uh, Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor to approve?
Councilman Whitmore, so moved, Mayor.
Councilman Whitmore has made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Councilman Heath.
By Councilman Heath. All those in favor? All those, are there any opposing? That motion carries six-zero. That is the last agenda item for tonight. Mister City Attorney, we don't have an executive session there, correct?
Not tonight, your, uh, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. This is Councilwoman Portis Jones.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Um, I just, uh, need some information regarding the, um, advertisement that was in the South Fulton Neighbor about a lawsuit, um, against, uh, the city or you specifically in your capacity as mayor of the city. Um, and it is shown, uh, it has appeared in the paper, uh, for the past two weeks. So could, uh, Mister City Attorney, you give us, provide us with some information regarding what this is? Um, what's the meaning of it? Uh, is Tidewater, Tidewater Capital?
Oh, Tidewater, Tidewater is a, is a claim that, um, this is a lawsuit that was filed by the sheriff of Fulton County. And we are handling in our, in our office representing the City of Fairburn. But this is a, um, this is a claim that arises out of a tax sale that was filed by Fulton County. Um, so we are, we are responding to it. It is, um, it's a, it's actually a very routine kind of procedure where there was a, there was a tax sale from a, a, on a piece of property that actually the City of Fairburn performed, uh, I think in two thousand and, I think two thousand and sixteen. And then later on, the Fulton County also, uh, uh, initiated a tax sale. So we are just sorting out who all is entitled to the money that came out of those tax pill, uh, excuse me, those tax sales. Some of it belongs to the City of Fairburn, some of it belongs to, uh, Fulton County. And the sheriff of Fulton County, who's responsible for handling those tax sale matters, uh, on behalf of the county, filed those lawsuits. And, uh, so Meredith Germaine in our office is handling that litigation on our behalf. Uh, and it's just, it's proceeding in a very routine manner at this point.
Okay, so it's Tidewater Capital, the sheriff, uh, where's, uh, in reading the document, uh, I didn't see a reference to, uh, the sheriff. It just listed, uh, the City of Fairburn and Tidewater Capital, uh, and, um, Myron Williams? And Ayers?
That would be a former owner of that property. Yep.
And who is Tidewater?
Uh, Tidewater would be the company that purchased the tax liens at Fulton County.
I see, okay.
Mm-hmm, yep.
All right, thank you.
I can, I can send to you, if you, if you want, I can get Meredith to send a more detailed email to you about those.
Uh, it would be helpful, and this is the first time I've seen, um, this, and the fact that it was a public notice in the paper. Um, uh, so I just need some clarity and understanding of what it is and its impact on the city.
I, I understand, and I can, I can get, uh, Mister Main to do that if you'd like.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right. I'll make, I'll make a note of that, and we'll, we'll send something out.
Okay, thank you, Mister Turner. Okay, that was the last item on the agenda for tonight. Um, let's go to our public comments. I, I'm sorry, not public comments, council comments. Yeah, you know, some cities actually do their public comments at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, they're strategic. Uh, so, so you have to sit for the whole meeting before you can get a two-minute say-so. Let's start with our council comments for tonight, and we'll start with, uh, Councilwoman Linda Davis.
Oh, okay, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everybody, and please be safe. That's it.
Okay, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to you. Uh, Councilman Heath?
Uh, yes, uh, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I just pray that all of the, uh, wishes and well-doings that, uh, you've done during this past year, that you will render the harvest of, of those good things. God bless.
Thank you, Councilman Heath. Uh, Councilman Palin?
Yes, uh, for all of us, for the, for thus, for those of us here on, on council and, and those who are listening in tonight, uh, it is my fervent hope and prayer that, uh, we can get back at some point in time in this next year to doing this face-to-face. Wouldn't that be nice? Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Councilman Palin. Um, Councilman Whitmore?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just want to say to our, uh, mayor and council, staff, uh, within the City of Fairburn, and all of our citizens, uh, wish you a Merry Merry Christmas and a very prosperous New Year. Understanding that, uh, this year's been a rough year with COVID-nineteen, uh, running around the country. And, uh, for us to be in this position where we are now, the business of the city continues to move forward. We haven't missed a beat, uh, we're thankful for that. But again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Years to each and every one of you.
Thank you, Councilman Whitmore. And, uh, Councilwoman Portis Jones?
Um, yes, um, I too want to say, uh, Happy Holidays to, uh, all, to mayor and council staff, um, and to all the residents, um, of, of the city. And for us to remember and be mindful that we are still in the middle of a pandemic and that we need to continue to take the precautions to be. and that we need to continue to take the precautions to be, um, safe, um, with each other, um, and with others. Uh, and let's, um, pray and hope that, uh, we come out of, uh, this, um, without, uh, any issues or concerns. Uh, twenty twenty has been a very, very challenging year, and there are, uh, some who are no longer with us. Uh, and we just want, um, that number to, to continue to decline, uh, and move to zero, um, as soon as possible. Uh, but with that being said, please enjoy, uh, your family and friends, um, and remember the reason for the season. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Portis Jones. And, uh, last but not least, my mayor, Pro Tim, uh, for twenty, uh, twenty twenty, um, uh, you'll, you'll listen smaller.
Well, I think it's been said, but I also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Yes, twenty twenty has been, uh, quite a year. But, um, I think as, uh, Councilman Whitmore said, we did not miss a beat. In fact, uh, we, we still prosper, we truly are situated to succeed. I want to thank you, Mayor, for your resilience, I want to thank council for, uh, yeah, well, sometimes we don't agree, but we still get the business of this city done. I want to thank all the staff, I mean, uh, awards tonight to, uh, Officer Lynch, we getting budget awards. I'm telling you, this city is on the move. And I'm getting so many, uh, compliments about how, um, the city is looking and the new businesses that are coming. So, hey, I'm just, I'm encouraged, it's been a tough year, but I'm encouraged, we made it. And Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and enjoy your families and your loved ones.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. And my comments tonight are similar to what the six council members, uh, have, um, have said. Uh, twenty twenty has been a very, uh, challenging year. Um, of the number of, um, people that have died from COVID nineteen, uh, it hit my home. It hit, uh, an aunt and, uh, and, uh, very vibrant. And she got, um, uh, diagnosed and less than a week later, she was gone. And I guess the saddest part about it is that, uh, she was one of the matriarchs of the family and we could not honor her the way, uh, we would have in normal times. And, uh, we were limited, uh, to the service. And so, uh, we're hoping that, uh, next year, we'll be able to go back, uh, to the graveside and, and honor her at that particular time. So, uh, twenty twenty has been very hard, it's been very hard for me, uh, with, uh, with the sickness of my daughter, uh, that I'm struggling with every day. Uh, and so, uh, I'm asking for the city of Fairburn's prayers, the city council prayers. And, uh, as we go through some more difficult times, uh, with her, uh, I would also, uh, to like to say that, um, and I have been honored, uh, to serve as the mayor for the city of Fairburn. Uh, it has not been an easy job, uh, it's not a job that's eight to five. Um, uh, most of them, uh, the department heads know that I may send an email at three o'clock in the morning. Uh, I may send one at five o'clock, I may send one at eleven o'clock, it just all depends, uh, what hits my mind at any particular time. So the city of Fairburn is always on my mind. Um, I'm always trying to think of great things that we can do to make the city better. Um, uh, with the streetscape that's coming downtown, I know there's been a lot of, uh, uh, complaints about the traffic, the barriers and so forth. But that's what it's going to take, uh, in order to get the city, uh, uh, to the stage that we know what it's going to look like next year this time. Um, tomorrow, I'm honored to be in the presence of, uh, our Fulton County, uh, Commissioner, uh, Rob Pitts, uh, as we do a soft opening of the cigar bar. This is over a million dollar establishment that's over on seventy-four. And, uh, we are proud to have this in the city. And so we're going to do a soft opening tomorrow morning, and, uh, I, I'm really happy about that. Uh, hopefully, we'll be able to announce, uh, within the next two weeks Casa Blanca. Uh, uh, she should be putting furniture in, uh, she's asking for, uh, 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 paraphernalia and stuff just to, uh, get the place looking like it looked, uh, before she got burned out. And so, uh, we're going to wish all of our businesses downtown and on seventy-four and all around Fairburn that they will have a more prosperous, uh, year, uh, in twenty twenty-one. And so with that being said, uh, one last thing I would like to invite council. If you have not seen the, um, uh, tree lighting, um, video, please go out to Facebook Live and also fairburn.com and look at it. Uh, we had over twenty-two hundred views, uh, on that video. Uh, I would like to say that Dr. Parks did an excellent job, excellent job.
Yes.
Uh, you would actually think that you were outside at a tree lighting. Uh, and we got some very good compliments from it. And thanks to the council members who, uh, took the time to, uh, to do a short video, uh, wishing everyone a Merry Christmas, uh, uh, for our first virtual, we're hoping that that's the first and that's going to be the last. So if you haven't seen it, please go out and look at it, uh, it's going to be up for a while. That being said, I'd like to wish everybody, uh, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and be safe. Uh, just don't invite a whole lot of folks to your house.
Everybody be safe, there's, there's an end to this. There's an end to it.
So everybody be safe, with that being said, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Councilwoman Davis.
Councilman Heath.
Uh, Councilwoman Davis made the motion to adjourn, Councilman Heath, uh, made a second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Goodbye, everyone, have a happy holiday.
All right.
Bless you all, have a, have a great holiday and enjoy your, enjoy your family.
Thank you. All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.